Well, now I call this regular meeting of Jacksonville City Council order. I want to welcome everyone who's come out for the meeting this evening and also those who'll be watching the meeting on G-10 television. I have with me tonight, we have a couple of young men visiting with us. They're both in the summer enrichment program. It's a joint program from the city of Jacksonville and Onslow County. I have Mr. Cameron Anderson. He's a rising freshman at Coastal Carolina Community College Early College. And also I have Mr. Gavin Cummings, who is a rising senior at Dixon High School in Sneets Ferry. And I would like to ask them both if they would lead us in the pledge and not have everyone rise, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for today, Lord. We thank you for the blessing of another opportunity to join together for the fellowship that we have, for the opportunity for the mayor and the council to do the business of the city, to protect and guide us through the things that are important to making our community better today than it was yesterday, Lord. We just ask that you provide wisdom to the council as they make these decisions tonight. We ask that you bless us all as we're here together tonight so that we can feel that energy and that love and that passion for each other and for our Jacksonville, Lord. We're so grateful for the many blessings that we get each and every day, for the opportunity that we have today and for the potential for opportunity tomorrow, Lord. Just bless us as we go in different directions this evening and tomorrow and bring us back together at another time. Thank you so much for your love, for your mercy, and all that you do for us. In your name we pray. Amen.
Okay. Counsel, you've been provided with a copy of the agenda for tonight's meeting. It is time we entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Any discussion here and unall in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed. Next, we have our first section of public comment for the evening. And I have several people that have signed up. I know some of you have signed up for purposes of a public hearing on some zoning, and we'll get to that shortly. But in general, if you have a general, we'll come back to you during that period of time. I have Luke Mueller. If you would please give your name and address to the clerk.
I'm a citizen of here, 859 Pine Valley Road. Just several things, I guess, in less than three minutes. I guess I'll go light to heavy. Huff Drive for numerous years now, going into decades, very wide space in the road. Well, I live right in the intersection of Pine Valley and Huff. Pine Valley has numerous obstacles, speed bumps, and posted placards of no parking on the side of the road, although Huff Drive is a proverbial used car lot slash road strip throughout all hours of the day and night, as any residents that live in that area well know. So that's kind of an issue is why is it Pine Valley this way? But Huff is just, I understand, emergency vehicles, but they got to run Pine Valley just as much as they run Huff. So that's a question. Haven't really gotten a clear answer on. Two, halfway house, convicts on Winthrop in a residential area. That's brand-new news to me. Another treatment facility right at the end of Huff in a residential area. Kind of, I don't know, to me, that's talking about zoning. I don't know. That's, that can't be, that's very disconcerting of families, kids, that these things are right embedded in our neighborhood. And a third, since zoning, why is there a condo slash townhouse that was built in a strictly residential area right adjacent to Pine Valley Huff, which has been a hotbed of, as we know, the biggest deal, crime and drugs as of late with drive-bys, murders, suicides, and masked gentlemen going through Carolina forests, just to name a few recent issues. So these are things on my mind that I've, I don't know, blotted, I don't know how many times in the last six, eight months. These guys from this townhouse area, all up and down in Puff Pine Valley, brazenly going through with vapes, drugs, cutting through yards, hollering Creo voodoo crap, putting voodoo stickers on a vehicle. I've seen them in Food Lion, in Home Depot, right up Western. I mean, these guys are acting with impunity, as if they're untouchable, laughing. And then we got, you know, recent murder, homicide, you know, suicide going on, so escalating from a drive-by, what, six weeks ago at 878 Pine Valley? So got some real issues.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ray, if you may, sir, somebody gets up with him and addresses his issues. Melanie Marzett.
Hello, Melanie Marzett, 403 Alta Vista Loop. I just want, first of all, send a shout-out to FMS for replacing some of the boards on the boardwalk at Wilson Bay. Thanks to Michael LaCory for helping me out with that. Second of all, the issue with New River and the housing, where do we stand with that? I go out there probably two or three times a week. It looks horrible. Even the homes that they did redo, that stuff is peeling, is bubbled. They did a horrible job with it. Anyone is welcome to go out there and drive around to see it. But something needs to be done with that. You also have the unhoused community that's in that area. They leave out of Onslow community outreach at, I think it's, they have to be out by And they're just in the vicinity and the Circle K. And my question is, what is being done with that? People need help. Everybody is unhoused for different reasons. I think that the system right now that we currently go by is broken, and we need to do something about that. And also, I would like to suggest that we get these towers and some of these parks where you have the bathroom and the shower in the same space so that people who are unhoused are able to clean themselves. Everybody should have the opportunity in wherever your community is to be, to be made feel that humanely and with dignity, and that would help that situation. We know that we have an unhoused population out here, and pretending that they don't exist is not the answer. And so that's where I stand with that today. Thank you.
Counsel, move on to adoption of the minutes and the consent items. You have minutes from the June 17, 2025 meeting. Move the adoption of the minutes and consent items.
Second.
Any discussion here and unall in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed. We'll move on to item number six. This is a public hearing on rezoning of property owned by the city of Jacksonville, 395 acres from residential single-family five, residential single-family seven, residential single-family 20, so on and so forth. And Ryan will be presenting this item. Ryan, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Tonight, I'm here to present item number six. However, we'll not be doing this alone. We've got a great group of, a group of team members that have been working on this project for some time, and I'll introduce those to you here in a moment. But as you stated, Mayor, this is a proposed rezoning for 395 acres of property owned by the city of Jacksonville in the Williamsburg Plantation area that's currently split-zoned. It's multiple single-family residential zoning districts, residential multifamily low-density, single-family five, single-family 20, single-family seven. And we want to try to clean that up tonight with the rezoning. So city of Jacksonville staff has initiated this rezoning to a proposed new district called a planned development district commercial. This before you tonight is an ortho photograph that kind of shows you the area encompassed in the black outline, which includes the little square piece in the middle. That's a city lift station, pump station. And the CAMA plan identifies this property as low-density residential. And what staff is requesting tonight is to rezone this to planned development commercial. This solid pink color doesn't really tell the story, though. The real story with a planned development district, since this is only the Jacksonville's, only our third one, is the items that are contained within the exhibit before you tonight, the terms and conditions under Part E. And that's where all of the standards that will go along with this rezoning can be found, one of which includes a concept master plan. So on the screen before you tonight, these color-coded areas mean something, and within those areas, only certain land uses would be able to go there. So you've got to look at those exhibits and correlate that use-specific table, I'm sorry, the use table found in the terms and conditions. And if it's the mixed-use area, which is the purple color here, there's only a handful of uses that could go there and only in that area. This is part of the mixed-use development that we've been talking about for Uptown Jacksonville, which is the mixed-use district with the indoor and outdoor sports complex, mixed-use commercial, and also some residential components. So the area in green, low development to no development, passive recreation area, buffers. The yellow would be mixed residential, which could be anything from single-family to duplexes to townhouses. The recreation entertainment area that I see here is like a light-red color, that's where the outdoor fields would be, the indoor sports complex, and Conference Center would be. And then the purple area, like I mentioned, would be where your commercial uses would be. The use table that I just alluded to, as you see before you on the screen, that's, it's, these are the permitted uses where staff and the team that's been working on this project over the last several months, we've, we've taken the hundreds of uses that are allowed, and we've narrowed them down to what you see before you on the screen, which is part of the terms and conditions. And it's very specific to, for example, the very top one on the left side, dwelling duplex. The only place that a dwelling duplex would be permitted would be in the mixed residential district. It wouldn't be allowed in any of those other two or three colors. Same thing with, let's go to the first commercial use, animal grooming. The only place that that would be able to go would be in the mixed use. So you can see that the uses are correlating to the specific areas. So if somebody is concerned about a commercial use in the green area, there's no use identified within the green area that is a commercial use. This is all part of the package of city council. When you consider this tonight, you're considering this package deal. If council adopts this tonight, this will be recorded as part of the ordinance books. And this is what the city and any, any other developer that goes in this area is going to have to abide by unless these terms and conditions are modified through a similar process in the future. This request was, we actually had a neighborhood meeting in the Williamsburg Homeowners Association Pavilion. They were gracious enough to let us use their facility. We had this on May 22, and we had about a two-hour window, I believe it was from 5:00 to 7:00 on the 22. We had multiple members of our team there, and we had a good turnout by the residents. This was an invitation that we followed the same statutory requirements for rezoning, which was notifying all the adjoining property owners. So there were some folks that live in the Norridale subdivision that got that letter, that inquired about it, and attended this meeting. It wasn't just for Williamsburg, it was for all the adjoining. It was the same people that got the notifications for this public hearing tonight. We had a lot of questions and comments and feedback, and as a result of that, staff came back and fine-tuned that use list based on some of the feedback that we received. We had members from McAdams and VHB that are here tonight. They were also here helping us meet with the public and answer those questions. And just a few photos that happened from that May 22 meeting. Then in, in, last month, the Planning Advisory Board considered this rezoning and recommended approval. And before this meeting, we posted public hearing signs. And as you may recall from the April meeting, we've been a little bit more strategic about making sure that the folks could see these signs. We didn't put them at the end of Albany or at the end of Western Boulevard to where maybe somebody couldn't see it. We actually put it very, very visible on the main corridors. We received over 20 or 30 calls. I know, I think I filled in 20 calls within the first two days. And a lot of the questions were, you know, where's the rezoning? Is it at the back of the neighborhood? Is it for the Uptown Jacksonville concept? Because they were worried that maybe it wasn't for that meeting that we had just had in May. Not everybody was able to attend that meeting on May 22. Some people were out of town. Not everybody's on social media, because I know that the HOA sent out stuff through their platforms. So it's possible some people were not made aware of that, even though we tried our best to kind of get that word out. And placing these signs out there, I think, continued that in meeting the statutory requirement. So we posted the signs, we've sent out the letters, we had the newspaper ad run. And at the, at the planning board meeting, along with staff, the Planning Advisory Board recommended approval of the rezoning based on the findings of fact A through J being found in the affirmative and to direct staff to amend the CAMA land use plan. The amendment is consistent with the adopted CAMA Plan Policy 22, which states, "Provide a superior system of parks and facilities and programs that serve neighborhood and community recreational needs," that the rezoning is reasonable and in the public interest. So with that, I am now going to turn it over to Sarah Van Avery. Yes, sir.
Would you go back a couple of slides?
I will.
Right there. Would you clarify the year that that, that meeting took place?
I'm sorry, that is 2025.
That's a good catch.
I just wanted that for the, for the record. I'm not sure how that made it in there. That's 2025, but thanks for the catch.
Mayor, if you recall, that may be a slip for this meeting, but the mayor did have a meeting with Mr. Massey in 2022 with the community that happened actually around October of 2022, which would have been the first after the council purchased the property and met with the property owners on site.
That is correct.
It's one meeting that we did have.
Well, the important date is the date to meet that 10 to 25-day statutory rules on when the signs went up. And, and you can see them because they're time-stated when we take those photos. So I apologize for that slip, but it was, it was on 2025. So now, if there's no other questions or concerns, I'm going to turn it over to Sarah Van Avery, who's going to continue with the presentation. But I'd also like to take the opportunity to, to introduce counsel, if you haven't already met him, to Sarah Van Avery, she's going to speak next. Jason with McAdams. Anthony, obviously, we know Anthony, Assistant City Manager. And then Andrew Top with VHB, he's our transportation expert engineer that I've had the pleasure of working with for probably 20 years now, I think. So, but with that, I'm going to turn it over to Sarah. Clicker for you here. Advance to the right.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Really appreciate your time this evening. Appreciate your whole time throughout this process. Appreciate all the neighbors and community members who also have taken their time to provide input, whether to staff or came out to the meeting, whether it was this May or some other time. So what we have here tonight, and I really don't have too much more to cover. Ryan has done a great job of covering everything, but just want to talk a little bit more about the planned development and why that is the zoning district that we have chosen. Right? So the PDC, Planned Development Commercial, is already within your UDO. It is the one that allows for the mix of residential and non-residential uses. So what we have done is essentially tailored that further, which is exactly what Ryan had alluded to, right? We've gone down through that use list, et cetera. So why a planned development district? This essentially allows for the innovative land planning and allows for those design concepts, allows for that higher quality of life to be achieved. And essentially, this is the visioning, this is the document that supports all of that visioning that has happened, that has been a product of stakeholders in the community and up here at the DIA. So thank you all very much for that. So again, just want to go through all of that input. This is essentially what has all led to, to the PD document that's in front of you. These are all of the community engagement processes that we've been through for the last few years, couple of years. So again, this is the overall PD concept plan, talking about those various districts that will allow for those various uses. And then what we have here is just some conceptual imagery to show you that high-quality development and design, what we have elevated the terms and conditions so that this type of development can be achieved. So this is for the mixed use, for multifamily. Again, these are just conceptual, just to give you an idea of sort of the mix of product types that could be achieved. So, and the star of the show here is our recreation and entertainment district. So thanks to our folks at LS3P, they've helped provide these, these renderings so that we can really get an idea, too, of what may, what we may see in the future. Again, this is the passive features that have led to this, the passive recreation area. This is based, again, off of community input and feedback feeding further to this. We've taken your existing street sections, modified those to enhance the pedestrian experience and incorporate that throughout the development. I'll be happy to entertain any questions at this time. Thank you again.
Questions? Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay. With that, anybody else want to add to that? With that, we'll, this is a map amendment or rezoning request and a change to a map amendment, so we'll open up a public hearing in this matter. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to this particular issue present? I know a couple of people signed up. Yes, sir. If you give your name and address to the clerk, please.
My name is Bill Lewis. I live at 105 Delview Court. That's in Hyde Park, which is one of the subdivisions of Williamsburg Plantation. Excuse me, I was out of town when they had this one meeting on the 22nd of May of this year. I called, or my wife called as soon as we saw the sign-up for the rezoning and had to leave a message, and she got a return call three days later. We found out, excuse me, part of the rezoning was they were going to open up Albany Drive and also Fawn Trail to help with the traffic going into this new area. Now, I know that about six, seven months before they started construction on the new school that's back in there, which is back behind my house, there was a lot of work going on in the land areas. I went down and talked to one of the supervisors, and we were talking about them using Albany to Fairmont to get into, another way to get into the school instead of going off of Western Boulevard. And the supervisor assured me at that time that all the streets within Williamsburg Plantation, especially in Hyde Park, were not designed to handle heavy traffic. He said, so nobody is going to be going in and out. Well, consequently, they blocked off where Fairmont dead-ends into where the school is. Now, they still have Albany open and Fawn Trail open. There's just gates right there. My concern is, when you put this new area into, you know, development, the traffic that's going to be created, you know, we were told that they want to open that up. Well, we've got some safety concerns. There's going to be increased traffic and speed, reduced quality of life, noise and pollution, property values. I bought my house 21 years ago, and it's worth a good amount of money right now. But the minute you guys start bringing traffic in through there, my property value has got to hit the tooth. This got to go right down. That's not right. You've got to preserve the residential character. You know, in short, maintaining separation between business and residential traffic is crucial for creating safe, healthy, and pleasant neighborhoods for the residents and preserving property values and community well-being. You know, I can understand you want to do some developing back in there. Well, you know, don't make my residential neighborhood suffer because of what you need to do. Take Western Boulevard, widen it so it'll help handle the traffic going back in through there, or try to come in from some other way. I mean, I know when we first moved into our house, we were told what the plans were for Williamsburg Plantation, which included cutting part of the road through to the back of where the county building is and connecting it to 258. That, to me, would be more of a logical area. You're not interrupting with anybody's homes, their values, health-wise or anything else. So, you know, I wish you would, you know, take that into consideration before you go voting or deciding what you're going to do with Fawn Trail and Albany.
Thank you. Let me cut you off there. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is Richard Brown III, 904 Biscayne Court. You're welcome. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I live in the same neighborhood. I'm just across the other area from this gentleman. I pretty much echo what he says. I have the same concerns that he does. We're already experiencing traffic issues in Williamsburg Plantation as it is, on that main road, that highway that goes through there. I've had to pull over to let cars go around me in a 25 mile an hour speed limit, and cars are coming so fast. If you're trying to drive the speed limit, they want to drive you off the road. So I've had to pull over to let cars go around me. As a matter of fact, as much as I appreciate our fine police officers in the city of Jacksonville, I believe there's a speeding problem in Jacksonville. So this development is only going to bring more problems in regard to speeding. I was told the same thing that this gentleman was told when I asked. They weren't going to open up Albany Drive. The traffic was going to go through Western Boulevard, which is made for traffic. Albany is, Albany Drive goes right through our neighborhood. And all of this traffic that's coming, that's going to come with this new development will be coming right near my house. And I'm not too thrilled about that because when I moved, when I bought my house, I was under the understanding that that was going to be a sort of a retirement neighborhood where we, you know, they would, we wouldn't have all of these issues moving forward. So that's my concern. I attended the meeting on the 22nd of May, and I did also make a comment to the parks and recreation people that were there. They do a fine job keeping our parks, taking, well taken care of. And I want to make mention of that again. But I am very much concerned about the speeding and the traffic that's going to come through this area if they do this development. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? [inaudible]
But I am very much concerned about the speeding and the traffic that's going to come through this area if they do this development. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am, you can go ahead whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Phillips, council members, Jackson, Bitner, Dr. Washington, Edwards, and Warden. I'm not here tonight just as a concerned citizen. I'm here as someone who deeply cares about this city, its safety, its future, and the people who call it home. I know each of you council members stepped into this role because you see yourself as leaders. Maybe you came here to help grow Jacksonville. Maybe you came here to protect what you call home. But you all came to serve the city and the citizens of Jacksonville. Tonight, that very servitude is being tested, not by routine agenda items, but by a decision that carries weight far beyond your lifetime and the generations of your children and their grandchildren. I say that because what you decide here today doesn't just shape a development, it shapes our city's resiliency, our environmental integrity, and the public's trust in your leadership. If your commitment is to protect Jacksonville, to build wisely, to lead responsibly, and to take these 400 acres is no small matter, it's a reflection of your principles, and it's a moment to show whether this council will protect what protects us. So the next few minutes, I want to show you why paving this tract is not growth, it's exposure, and why voting no is not obstruction, it's foresight, a vote for stewardship and not surrender. The soil beneath One City Center or Uptown Jacksonville tells the truth that these developers won't put in their renderings. I, however, have taken the time to go through the United States Department of Agriculture soil samples. I spent my life being a steward of the land. I've learned how to read it, work with it, and respect what it gives back. For the past decade, I've worked in data analytics with a focus on soil and water science. And in my experience, the science doesn't spin stories, it delivers facts, and the facts here are undeniable. So let's start with the science that these maps tell us on these 400 acres. It contains six unique soil types, each with a different drainage behavior. Of the 160 acres posed no flood risk. That's less than half, those of which are scattered and disconnected. They can't work together to control runoff. That's not a green light, that's a warning sign. Nearly 100 acres fall in what they call an aquatic moisture regime. That means that the soil is frequently saturated, oxygen-starved, and behaves like a wetland, even if it's not labeled as one.
You need to wrap it up, please. Time.
What's happening here is not hypothetical. We've seen it before. There are documented real failures. Stormwater does not respect your zoning guidelines. It doesn't stop at boundary lines. Water flows where it wants to, especially when you clearcut land. One acre of trees can hold 1.5 million gallons of water. It acts like a sponge. It protects Ward One. It protects those in Ward Three that zone right next to this waterland. We've seen it at Crabtree Mall, where they built adjacent to just a creek, not a river. It has flooded multiple times, and it has cost the taxpayers thousands in retrofitting. So I ask-
I'm going to have to stop you right there. You can discuss the rest with staff, but right now, I've let you have 43 seconds, more than what I should have, so if you would talk with them afterwards, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you for the information.
Yes, very, that's very good information. You did your, you did your research, there's no doubt about that. But thank you.
Good evening. I'm Graham Pelletier, lifelong, pretty much resident of North Carolina and Jacksonville. And I've listened to everybody's comments here, and this affects me probably more than anybody else in here. But what y'all are getting ready to hopefully approve, I think will be an incredible advantage to the city. And I'm sure my opinion differs from a lot of people in here, but your property values more than likely will rise because you're going to be within walking distance of really the best thing as far as recreational facilities for everybody, not just a country club or whatever. You have walking trails going in. Did I see an amphitheater in that? You're going to have an amphitheater at one point or another. And if anybody's been to Mayfair or anything like that, that is part of what this is going to be, from what I understand. And comparing it to Crabtree Valley, where it's nothing but cement and asphalt, yes, that's going to flood. This is not going to be just cement and asphalt and housing. It's going to be a lot of open spaces, and I think it's going to be a boon to this neighborhood that's there. You're going to be within walking distance, and it's, I think it's going to be a, just a very good thing. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? I see no one. We'll close the public hearing, open up the regular meeting again, and council, you've been asked to approve this legislative map amendment.
Mr. Mayor, before we make a motion, could we address the access off of Western into that development, please?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. So just to clarify, Mr. Warden, the access off of Western, or are you talking about the Albany?
What is the planned access into this 400 acres?
Okay. Well, the access is twofold, okay? The first is, of course, and I don't know, Lisa, do you have the annotation ready? Yes, she does. The primary entrance is going to be off of Western Boulevard at the end of Gum Branch Road. The great news is, of course, several years ago, DOT just completed a very expensive roadway widening project to help increase the capacity of that intersection. We used to sit there forever and a day waiting to turn left off of Gum Branch onto Western. We don't do that anymore. And the traffic study that's been completed by our friends at VHB basically says that intersection in the roadway is going to handle the traffic. Now, over time, as the development matures, you know, not at day one, but as it moves from phase to phase to phase, we may, well, we are going to end up having to make improvements at some of these internal intersections. But again, that's not at day one. The traffic study shows very clearly, and frankly, I think it overestimates the number of trips that we're going to generate, but it shows very clearly that this primary access is going to work very well over the lifecycle of the project. Okay? Now, if I may, address the Albany and, what's the other one? Fawn Trail. So the Albany and the Fawn Trail access are actually very important for both of the subdivisions, the development that we want to, that we want to construct, as well as the existing Williamsburg Plantation. So the challenge is, is that the only point of ingress and egress for the southern section of the development, basically past this line right here, is this road.
Can you draw it? It's behind your iPad.
Is that the one that runs by the Taco Bell in that area?
Yes, so the Taco Bell's right about here, and then you come in, and there's a road that connects between Western and Williamsburg. It's called Westmont, okay? And then once you get past Westmont, there is no additional connectivity out to Gum Branch Road, period. Okay? The challenge with that is, is that our rules, and these are fire department rules, these are not zoning rules, but these are fire department rules, say that there is not enough remote access to adequately serve that neighborhood. So it comes up as the same problem that we've talked about in the past. If a roadway's blocked, how do you get in with an ambulance? How do you get in with a fire truck? Well, in this particular case, these access points solve that remote access problem for both projects. Okay? And it's because you can get out to Western Boulevard, and that provides an adequate amount of what they call remote access for emergency services.
What road is that, Anthony?
Which one? The one on the left?
Yes.
That is Fawn Trail.
So that is Fawn Trail there, okay.
Yes, sir. Mm-hmm. Yes. Now, it gets even more important because of the fact that there's actually, off the page, there's a significant amount of property that's going to be developed in the very near future, and they're looking to build 600, 700, 800 homes. That's not going to happen unless these, all this connectivity occurs. So these connections are mission-critical, not only for emergency access to the existing subdivision, but for future development, both on our parcel as well as other private property owners. One thing, it's in your package here that I'd like to point out to you. The team behind me here, and of course, my teammates in the audience who are city staff members, you know, we've taken very great care to, to respect the sensitive nature of this property. You know, there is a lot of flood zone, there is a lot of poor soil conditions, and if you have it in front of you, this document here, you may have it on your iPad, but if you flipped to page 15, I'll point out to you that of the 400, or excuse me, 395 acres, 230.8 acres are essentially being held in reserve. These are either buffers between the project and the existing residential neighborhood, or they're flood zones, or they're areas where, you know, we have poor soils that we know that we're not going to be able to dig on. We've actually done all the geotechnical work, and so we know where the bad soils are, we know where the good soils are, and we know how to manage that as part of this development plan. That's why this has taken us two years to come about. So I just wanted to point that out. This is what you might consider, you know, showing my background in planning, what you might consider a conservation subdivision, where you're actually conserving more than half of the property that you're developing. You're creating density where it makes the most sense, but then you're leaving the natural areas in that state. Now granted, we might have walking trails in there and so far and so forth, but, you know, that's part of, the purpose of this property is for people to have access and to use it for recreation.
So in that floodplain area and the passive recreation, because we're doing this planned development, there will not be any major structures, any ideas, anything that would-
Well, we're not, the rules basically limit us from building anything in the flood zone, and of course, those are state, you know, federal flood laws, but then we also have some what they call jurisdictional wetlands in the area that would prevent us from building hardened structures. Now, it's not to say that you couldn't put a walking trail in there, but you're not going to build a house, you're not going to build a building. So, yes, ma'am?
Mr. Prins, forgive me if I missed it in your presentation. With the traffic impact analysis, is there any data to discuss, one, percentage-wise, the traffic that is going to be increased on this road? And then secondly, I do believe I heard a gentleman indicate that the speed limit is currently 25 miles per hour. Is there an adjustment with DOT that that speed limit could be regulated up or possibly down with the new incoming traffic on these roads?
So you're talking, are you talking about Western Boulevard, or you're talking about Albany and-
Western Boulevard, Albany, Fawn Trail, those-
Well, the good news is, is that as part of this project, we're going to have to start talking about taking over that section of Western Boulevard from DOT. And the reason is, is because their rules are just very stringent, and they're not going to allow us to do what we need to do to manage the traffic or to make it a nice entryway into the project. So that's a long way of saying that by taking those streets over, we have authority of what the speed limit is, what the design configuration is. And of course, both Albany as well as Fawn Trail, those are existing city-maintained We do have a traffic and safety committee that meets quarterly to review things like this, and we often make adjustments to speed limits and traffic patterns, et cetera, to help resolve problems.
I clarify your questions.
Thank you.
Mayor, one more thing. Has it been considered to have more patrols around it, at least to kind of see if that lessens the amount of speed of citizens coming through there?
Well, I'm not going to speak for Chief Phelps, but I know one of the great things that they have is called targeted enforcement or selected enforcement. And so depending on the complaints that we receive, and this is something- Is that me? [laughing] We do have a traffic and safety committee that meets quarterly to review things like this, and we often make adjustments to speed limits and traffic patterns, et cetera, to help resolve problems.
I clarify your questions.
Thank you.
Mayor, one more thing. Has it been considered to have more patrols around it, at least to kind of see if that lessens the amount of speed of citizens coming through there?
Well, I'm not going to speak for Chief Phelps, but I know one of the great things that they have is called targeted enforcement or selected enforcement. And so depending on the complaints that we receive, and this is something... Is that me?
(noise) (pause) Mr. Prince, a motion in a second. All of us in favor, say a five percent.
Aye.
All opposed. That takes us to number seven. This is also a request for 307 Warren Street, this is from single-family seven to downtown business. All right, so agenda item number seven is another rezoning request. This is for a single lot close to City Hall here at 307 Warren Street. City staff has worked with Bob and Robert and Linda Rush, the property owners. We're bringing forth this rezoning, and it's a staff-initiated request with the owner's signature. And this is a request to amend the property from residential single-family seven to downtown business.
The land use plan identifies this parcel as low-density residential. It has been used over the years for both commercial and residential purposes, which the downtown business zone allows both. And in light of the district allowing both, the property owner has a desire to have that flexibility and work with staff, which is why we brought this rezoning and the subsequent rezoning that's for the five parcels across the street. This rezoning request was considered by the planning board at their last meeting, which was on June the ninth, where they recommended approval based on the recommendation that we are recommending to City Council tonight, that it is in the public interest, the reasonable, the request is reasonable, and that the findings are found in the affirmative in A through J. We did post the signs on 307 Warren Street, as shown here before your meeting, the statutory requirements. We sent out letters to the adjourners and posted the legal ad. At this time, be happy to answer any questions that the mayor and council may have.
Counsel, any questions? Ryan.
Just, just one. Why staff-initiated and why not owner-initiated?
We look at this as an opportunity to further the redevelopment of downtown, and, you know, we felt that it was kind of a good opportunity for us to assist with that process in terms of timing and expenses and things of that nature. So we thought it was a good act. I think there was some confusion over the years because it was used for residential, uh, commercial purposes. You know, not sure exactly when the zoning changed, but felt like it was a good idea. And while we were at it, we worked with the county across the street, which is the subsequent rezoning that we'll discuss here in a moment.
Any other questions, Ryan?
Can I add one other thing? With the recent statutory changes, you know, before staff would bring staff-initiated rezoning requests to City Council, that's become harder now because it takes ownership signature. So, you know, being that they were willing to do this, we just need them to sign on, which they were willing to do. It's just kind of a little bit different situation that we find ourselves in today than what we've seen in the years past.
So, and they didn't realize that. So staff-initiated before could have been over the objections of the owner. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Good law. Thank you.
Mayor, add to Mr. Warden's question there. Looking at the internal opportunity, both with the downtown project and with economic development, it really is of value to see Ryan and his team take that initiative. Just like we said, these are two sister properties, working with the county and working with this family to do something that's going to add value to our downtown revitalization project and give us other opportunities for redevelopment. It's a great action on the team's part to try and move it forward. So we're real excited to have the opportunity. And back to Mr. Warden's point, getting the buy-in from the property owners to see a bigger picture is excellent because it hits that visioning for what we're working on, on Court Street, on Johnson, on New Bridge, and everything around the area. So value add by far.
Everybody good? Since it is a map amendment, we have a public hearing in this matter. We recessed a regular council meeting, opened up a public hearing on this matter. 307 Warren Street, anyone present wishes to speak to this? Seeing no one, closed the public hearing. Counsel, you're being asked to approve the map amendment, rezoning request.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the rezoning request, accepting the evaluation that staff report has found facts A through J in the affirmative and direct staff to update CAMA future land use map. The rezoning is a reasonable request, is in the public interest, and will help our downtown.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Here, none all, signify by a percent.
Aye.
Opposed. We're going to number eight. This is a map amendment on the rezoning of 304, 308, 310, 319, and 321, no, I'm sorry, 304, 308, and 310 Warren Street, and 319 and 321 HURF, from residential single-family seven to downtown business.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, I'll try to keep this a little bit brief, more brief than the previous one. Across the street from the previous rezoning, this is property owned by Aliza County. We required their signature before we brought this before the board. It's currently zoned residential single-family seven. They're all five parcels are vacant, and we are looking to amend this to downtown business as well. This was her, the CAMA land use plan identifies it as low-density residential. The downtown business allows both commercial and residential uses. This is what the rezoning would look like if approved, plus the street, the yellow piece right here is now light blue as well. And at the planning board meeting, they recommended approval of this request as is staff, based on the findings of fact, A through J being found in the affirmative, and that the rezoning is reasonable and in the public interest. Be happy to answer any questions that the mayor and council may have.
Mayor, what, go back, back one slide, back to the overhead. What processes would be in place to protect the folks that live adjacent to those properties?
So there's specific buffering standards for downtown business adjacent to residential single-family seven that would have to be accommodated.
And then, what about limiting certain uses? For example, I couldn't see a convenience store going down here.
It would be, this is a base standard rezoning, so whatever is a permitted use in the use table found in the downtown business zone would be, what would be allowable for either permitted use or special use.
And that's pretty limited, is that correct?
It, there's, it's one of the more reduced commercial districts.
I know it is. Can you just look real quick, like, is a convenience store, would that be a special use, or would it be permitted?
Let's see. Mayor, while he's looking that up, this is the same type of process. The county's working on a development plan for this property. Some people may have heard this in some of the presentations that the county manager and the chair have given out in the community. I heard it again last week from the county manager at the Rotary Meeting, talking about some plans they would like to have here. Ryan did the same thing, reaching out to the county team to say, if this is something you're going to consider in the future, you're going to have to get it through the hopper and the process of our planning board and our city council, and either to move it forward. So one of the things that we like to do is have that symmetry with the county as they're trying to move a project forward. We want to be working in parallel with them so that someone doesn't ask the same type of questions Mr. Warden's asking later on, and then the county, like any other developer, would have a hiccup at that point. So part of the dialogue happened, Ryan reaching out to the county manager and say, here's an opportunity, we can review this at the same time that another request is on the table. Would you like for us to consider that? They've had that back and forth to try and figure out if it's a value add. So same kind of process. City initiated based on the outreach of Ryan and the team to try and get ahead of a project. I think it really fits into that overall downtown plan of how we're trying to revitalize an area.
And to answer your specific question as relates to convenience stores, with or without gas sales, and with or without a to-go order restaurant included, they're all three special use permits, so they would have to be considered by the mayor and council.
Great, special use. So they would have to have a public hearing and so forth and so on.
Right.
And of course, I know we've been more restrictive on our vaping, no chance of that occurring in that particular items.
So the hookah vape tobacco is not an allowable use in downtown, plus they wouldn't be able to meet the spacing for residential and school purposes.
I wanted to make sure that was made public, so thank you.
And Mr. King, I do believe at the far end of that street, how far is New Bridge Middle School?
It's slightly off the page here. One or two lots, I believe.
It's well within the restriction for vape shops around schools.
Correct. I'm just trying to see. Just, it's just off the page there.
What's the distance from vape, from schools?
I want to say it's a thousand to fifteen hundred feet, but that's off the memory.
It's not too far.
I think you're close, if you're not exact.
But it's a budding residential, so because it's next door to residential vape shops, plus it's not allowed in the district. So there's multiple things that would stop that from occurring.
You know, I just wanted, I just wanted the public to know that we are still trying to protect the residential integrity adjacent to it. We know we have a school. It's a commercial site, but we want to make sure that it's, the uses are compatible with the residential surroundings. So thank you for those answers.
Thank you. Any other questions, counsel? Thank you, Ryan. It's time we recessed a regular council meeting, opened up a public hearing on this matter. Anyone wishes to speak to this issue? Seeing no one, closed the public hearing. Counsel, you're being asked to consider the rezoning request and map amendment.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the rezoning request based on the fact of the staff report being affirmative on the findings and facts of A through J, and that the rezoning is reasonable and in the public interest, and that we will have to update the future, the CAMA future land use map or plan, both.
Second.
Any further discussion? Here, none all in favor, signify by a percent.
Aye.
All opposed. All right. Next, we'll go to reports for this evening, and I'll start with Mr. Warden.
Got a report, sir. Thank you.
Ms. Edwards?
No report.
Dr. Walsh?
I recently represented the city at the National League of Cities Summer Board Leadership Conference, publicized a report out of the 2025 State of the Cities Report. And Ms. Marshburn, I'll just give this to you so that my report is not prolonged.
And congratulations on your sparing in. Back to the...
Mr. Mayor, can I redo again?
Sure.
What, I got looking over there, and I saw, I knew, we got a letter from the governor and from the Commissioner of Labor congratulating the city of Jacksonville, achieving the 2025 All-American City. They're just finding out what we all know here in Jacksonville, that this is an All-American City. Sure, we have our, we have our problems, we have our speeders, we have some, we have people who are unhomed and unhoused, and we certainly take all of that into consideration. And of course, tonight, we talked about the moving the city forward on quality of life issues with the four hundred acres. There's nothing that affects the city that is unimportant to us or to the city staff, and we listen to what you have to say. We take it very seriously, and we're always trying to make this a better place to live, work, and play, and raise a family. And we're proud of our All-American status. Second time we've won it, and I can thank the city staff, those who worked directly on this. They did a great job, and I know, I know it wasn't easy, all the rehearsals, all of the memorization of what you had to say, or at least the major points, and of course, I know you put it in your own words. And coming from the heart, it's always, it always sells better when you believe in what you're selling. So thank you for all of those that were directly involved in that All-American presentation. You did a great job, and I'm very proud of you. Thank you.
Might we have them stand?
Yes.
If you're in the room and were part of that team, or part of that presentation, or part of the preparation, please stand.
Please stand. Thank you.
Mayor, they're taking all my thunder.
I know.
Sorry. Please stand.
Why don't you...
Please stand.
You get all the thunder anyway.
Thank you.
Don't go nowhere, Counsel. We're going to make you stand up again.
What a great command. What a great command. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, report, Tim Bittner? No report. Mr. Jackson?
Yeah, I would like to, what's, we met with a group of collaborators, nonprofits, with, what was the group called that we met at the Board of Realtors?
CRE.
Okay. Well, they're actually helping guide us through the process of looking at our home situation, be it homelessness, be it workforce housing, be it senior housing, be it veterans housing. So really excited about it because you had so many different key stakeholders to be involved in the process, and everybody be on with trying to solve some of these problems. It might be mixed-use or something of that degree. We don't know, but we're still moving forward.
Yeah, I want you to say, we're not standing still on this issue. We're pushing it forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for not letting Mr. Warden keep talking. Hopefully, I've got a...
Try and shut him down.
It was close, Mayor. I gave the sign to cut off his mic, but that would have been a little too much, so...
I want you to know, I'm one of those rarities. I'm a thin-skinned politician.
Mayor, for our one-city moment, we do want to say thank you to mayor and council, and to this entire community for giving us the opportunity to travel and compete in Denver, Colorado this year for the National Civic League's All-American City Award. What an honor. I know when we came back last year, we talked to Mr. Bittner. I know Mr. Warden said, you know, it was a great presentation last year, but what's the, what's the message next year? What's the topic? And we said, it's environmental stewardship. And on that day, at that council meeting, Mr. Warden said, well, we got to go. I was like, Mr. Warden, we don't need to go. We did good. We have a lot of pride. And he said, we're going. And so it wasn't really a debate, it was more much a direction. And so I can tell you that when we hear environmental stewardship, much like the comments tonight, Mr. Massey and I have talked about it over and over again, this is our opportunity to tell our story as something that we do better than anybody else in this country. And so it was an opportunity to bring together a team and put together a process. So hopefully, if this, if this video plays, you're going to get to watch this. And I want to say one more comment after it, Mayor, so grab your popcorn and roll the beautiful bean footage.
Jacksonville, North Carolina, are you ready?
All right, sir! Let's go!
You may begin.
The story of our river restoration is one of resilience, vision, and community spirit. It stands as a testament to what we can achieve when we own our past and commit to preserving our environment for future generations. This is our story.
My brother and my mother and my dad, we would spend all down the river fishing. And we would play down there, play in the water and all that. And the water just started looking worse and worse and worse, and then finally we realized that the water was dead.
To win World War II, an amphibious campaign was considered essential for victory. Miles of undeveloped beaches and adjacent river were needed for training. The area around Jacksonville and our new river, which provided miles of untouched oceanfront property and had few residents, was identified. It is now Camp Lejeune.
Following the war, our community experienced rapid growth. By the eighties, our infrastructure was straining, and in the nineties, even more troops were assigned to the area. Today, more than forty-four thousand Marines, sailors, coast guardsmen, and their families are stationed on and off of the base.
The degradation of the New River began abundantly clear in June of 1995, when twenty-two million gallons of untreated hog waste spilled into tobacco fields and flowed into the New River. Scientists warned of a large fish kill as the huge brownish-red plume slowly moved down the New River. But it didn't happen because the river was organically dead. Jacksonville has a spirit of listening to our residents, and they spoke up in committees, public forums, and directly to elected officials. A diverse group of citizens said they wanted their river back. It was a shared vision of what we should be. I served in the Marine Corps, and the saying "Marine green" is intended to unify and accomplish the mission. Jacksonville looks around the room to ensure the whole community is represented, and when it listens, our community engagement opportunities are diverse, inclusive, and proactive. The Jacksonville City Council unanimously voted to accept the cleanup as a moral responsibility and to help restore, protect, and develop future stewards of the New River.
The message was, man messed it up, man fixed it. Don't let it happen again.
The city built an environmentally friendly land application plant for wastewater treatment. The treated effluent is spread into forests, which are regularly harvested. The Marine Corps agreed to... in Denver, Colorado this year for the National Civic League's All-America City Award. What an honor. I know when we came back last year, we talked to Mr. Bittner, I know Mr. Warden said, you know, it was a great presentation last year, but what's the, what's the message next year? What's the topic? And we said, it's environmental stewardship. And on that day, at that council meeting, Mr. Warden said, well, we got to go. I was like, Mr. Warden, we don't need to go. We did good. We, we have a lot of pride. And he said, we're going. And so it wasn't really a debate, it was more much a direction. And so I can tell you that when we hear environmental stewardship, much like the comments tonight, Mr. Massey and I have talked about it over and over again, this is our opportunity to tell our story as something that we do better than anybody else in this country. And so it was an opportunity to, to bring together a team and put together a process. So hopefully, if this, if this video plays, you're going to get to watch this, and I want to say one more comment after it, Mayor, so, so grab your popcorn and roll the beautiful bean footage.
Jacksonville, North Carolina, are you ready?
All right, sir! Let's go!
You may begin.
The story of our river restoration is one of resilience, vision, and community spirit. It stands as a testament to what we can achieve when we own our past and commitment for preserving our environment for future generations. This is our story.
My brother and my mother and my dad, we would spend all down the river fishing. And we would play down there, play in the water and all that. And the water just started looking worse and worse and worse, and then finally we realized that the water was dead.
To win World War II, an amphibious campaign was considered essential for victory. Miles of undeveloped beaches and adjacent river were needed for training. The area around Jacksonville and our new river, which provided miles of untouched oceanfront property and had few residents, was identified. It is now Camp Lejeune.
Following the war, our community experienced rapid growth. By the eighties, our infrastructure was straining, and in the nineties, even more troops were assigned to the area. Today, more than 44,000 Marines, sailors, Coast Guardsmen, and their families are stationed on and off of the base.
The degradation of the New River began abundantly clear in June of 1995, when 22 million gallons of untreated hogway spilled into tobacco fields and flowed into the New River. Scientists warned of a large fish kill as the huge brownish-red plume slowly moved down the New River. But it didn't happen, because the river was organically dead. Jacksonville has a spirit of listening to our residents, and they spoke up in committees, public forums, and directly to elected officials. A diverse group of citizens said they wanted their river back. It was a shared vision of what we should be. I served in the Marine Corps, and the saying "Marine green" is intended to unify and accomplish the mission. Jacksonville looks around the room to ensure the whole community is represented, and when it listens, our community engagement opportunities are diverse, inclusive, and proactive. The Jacksonville City Council unanimously voted to accept the cleanup as a more responsibility, and to help restore, protect, and develop future stewards of the New River.
The message was, man messed it up, man fixed it, don't let it happen again.
The city built an environmentally friendly land application plant for wastewater treatment. The treated effluent is spread into forests, which are regularly harvested. The Marine Corps agreed to consolidate eight wastewater plants on the base into two that used advanced technology to return pure water to the river. The New River Roundtable, of which the base is a key member, was formed to watch over the river and encourage collaboration.
The county's economic developer was working with NC State University professors to create agriculture projects. One potential crop was oysters, which have a unique ability to filter about 20 gallons of water a day. The idea grew to introduce 10 million oysters into and around Wilson Bay where the pollution was most severe. Along with aeration, restored wetlands, and stormwater mitigation, the project worked. And within months, new life was found in Wilson Bay.
A diverse group of students, residents, Marines, and their families volunteered to help the scientists with the projects. They helped restore the wetlands and deploy oysters, and in the process, became the newest stewards of the river. The community now has a triathlon with competitive swimming in the river. That could not have happened in the past.
We're sustaining our river restoration with the innovative Oyster Highway. It includes 12 one-acre oyster reefs, spanning from Jacksonville to near the river's mouth, where native oysters grow naturally. Since we started, it has evolved into a $4 million project, featuring a cutting-edge substrate that greatly enhances oyster recruitment. We're also working to address four other watershed projects. Approximately 420 million gallons of the New River is cleaned through the 21 million deployed oysters every day. These oysters and our efforts are a lasting testament that our community cares about our river and is committed to keeping it clean.
The Sturgeon City Environmental Education Center was created to tell the story of the river and create future stewards of the river. Man messed it up, man fixed it. Don't let it happen again. The center has become so successful, it evolved into a standalone nonprofit, educating more than 20,000 youth and family members each year, who represent that diversity of military and civilian community. This, we practice inclusion, who, all who wish to learn about our environment. This was our innovation, to react and to support, and provide a sustainable way to tell the story of our river cleanup, and educate new future generations of stewards of the river. Being housed at the former wastewater treatment plant, it also provides a visual reminder of the need for environmental resiliency for our river.
And why is the center named Sturgeon City?
Well, sturgeons are bottom feeders, and the heavy sludge from the river prevented them to returning to spawn, so they abandoned the New River. Some sturgeon, though, have returned, and it takes decades to restore them back to their former numbers.
The Jacksonville Youth Council is part of our efforts to create multiple ways of sustainability and resilience. The Youth Council is composed of high school students from all over our county. These students engage directly with elected officials and learn about their community. This program and others detail our commitment to real civic engagement, real diversity, and to advancing input for a shared vision, while respecting our desire to provide for inclusiveness and equity. Another program is the New River Institute, which each summer invites students to engage in our sustainable environmental activities, thus making them part of our commitment to recruit stewards for the, for the river of our future.
I helped with the institutes while I was at UNC Chapel Hill. Now UNC has 87 undergrads who are participating in research in my home county. The research demonstrates the effectiveness of the restoration processes used, and that they can be replicated elsewhere. I've been a participant in the clean and green cleanups of the city, and I've seen the impact that Sturgeon City Environmental Education Center makes in creating future stewards of the river. My hometown's commitment to this massive environmental restoration project inspired me to pursue a career in environmental education, and I carry the story and pride in my community with me wherever I go.
After our first designation, we learned something. Our community had to continue to value the league's civic index. The Civic Affairs Committee has been tasked with regularly evaluating our community's civic infrastructure using the index. We appreciate the tough questions about civic engagement, authentic communication, inclusiveness, and our community's shared vision. Since 1992, there have been 11 different civic index reports made. Through Listening First, we discover new ideas and consensus from a collaborative session, where questions are asked and ideas, as well as solutions, flourish.
Way to go. In a previous version of the civic index, our community adopted the concept of a triad of government, businesses, and nonprofits collaborating to create a better community. We realized that our nonprofit community was not effectively sharing information and coordinating efforts, so the, the city created and staffed the nonprofit Executives Roundtable to provide a mechanism for sharing information and advancing professionalism in quality training for executives and board members. Together with our partners, we achieved a shared vision of what Jacksonville could be with a strong, unified nonprofit community.
Yep. I'm with the Coastal Conservation Association and the North Carolina Wildlife Habitat Foundation. Both are part of the many organizations that provided funds to start the Oyster Highway. As a lifelong fisherman, I know that by creating a resilient, sustainable habitat, the Oyster Highway has changed the quality of fishing in the New River. Water quality has improved, and new habitats have been created to protect young fish and help them thrive on the man-made reefs. Many fishermen and an expanding group of river guides understand this incredible impact, and we are enjoying a thriving fishery built by the hands of many volunteers and the city. I'm proud to be part of passing our fishing heritage to another generation.
Our city is proud of this novel river cleanup. We're also proud that the University of North Carolina at Wilmington is considering a full-time teaching site for its prestigious marine science program at Sturgeon City.
And when the big spill occurred, our citizens were engaged and communicated their needs. We've done this proudly with inclusiveness and equity, collaborating with numerous organizations and neighborhoods, and it has resulted in innovations that can be replicated. We use every opportunity, including the annual community development surveys, to listen carefully to our citizens and share their input with the entire city.
We sincerely believe that we have shown a steadfast and enduring commitment to environmental resilience, stewardship, and sustainability through meaningful community engagement. We are proud that we seek to be diverse, inclusive, and proactive. We understand and appreciate the need for a shared vision of what we can become, and we firmly believe that our actions demonstrate this.
Jacksonville's impact is measured in the continued actions we take to clean the river and inspire new stewards. At the same time, we're integrating these actions into our civic infrastructure to sustain this stewardship of the New River and to better our community. These experiences uniquely prepare us for community, for our community, for tough conversations such as climate change.
And on behalf of the youth of Jacksonville, we accept our role as stewards of the New River.
Fantastic.
Mayor, thanks for, thanks for the opportunity again. Thank you for letting us go represent our community. We do have our team, and so if you don't mind to stand again, with all your amazingness. So we put them on here. So we have members of the team here tonight. You have Jakaya Page, Lisa, Lisa, Kinsley, Pamela, Brooklyn, who just left, Reverend Churchwell, Pat, Leila, and, and Glenn, all here tonight. This is, this is the team that we took with us. And then the people that couldn't be here with us tonight, Elijah, Nia, Jordan, Kai, Meredith, Rocky, and Tim. I think that's all 19 of us, so great job to all of our.
Great job.
Mayor, I tell you, just in, for this group showing up tonight, this is the talent that we have in our community. You look at some of the things, we have so much information to share there, we didn't want to miss out on anything whatsoever. So for some people that were very good, they knew their lines, they knew what to say, they didn't want to miss it. Some people, like Reverend Churchwell, had about 6,000 lines that they had to deliver in about 45 seconds. There was a strict dress code. Glenn decided he wanted to look sharper than the rest of us onstage. We learned some people, they didn't get a lot of sleep the night before, maybe they were nervous onstage, they couldn't keep it all together. But overall, how many millions of gallons a day, Pat, are we treating?
420.
420 a day. The energy, the excitement there. When Pat started this concept with Lisa, when they were putting the other application, they had to figure out how to contain all of the information into a few words. And then what Glenn had to do was get it down into 10 minutes. You'll notice, some of us had to speak faster. Poor old Kai, Kai's not here, he's traveling overseas still, I believe. Kai was up to 126 words a minute or something? Yeah, well, Kai was flying. And by the time we got to Elijah Harris, who was playing the guitar, and, he was our hype man, by the way, he's in our fire department, I don't know where he's at tonight, he's probably still resting and recovering, but Elijah was incredible in terms of, he brought the energy and felt that he had to do it. So for him, when he saw the flag come up, when I was speaking, it said, you're out of time, he had to speed through, and then Kinsley had to finish there at the end and get the lines out, because without those words about passing it on to our youth, we wouldn't have told our message. And my last comment, Mayor, Mr. Bittner called after seeing the presentation, and he said, the question-and-answer session, which we can, you can watch that online on the city website or on their Facebook page, the question-and-answer session really sold it. Our youth, which 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 was here, those are the individuals that I believe in my heart and soul really brought at home for us during the question-and answering session. It was very strong. We had this, we had this plan that, I didn't have to do anything in that session, I was the emcee, because I don't have the talent these guys had, and we had this unspoken word that if I make eye contact with you, you're ready to speak. And I just looked at another person who still hasn't looked at me in a month, and I can't say her name because she still looked down, but this young lady has so much to share, she just doesn't want to say it out loud in front of the microphone. But for the ones that did step up to the mic and they were able to share, Mr. Bittner's spot on. They brought it home for us with all the information, and from, from Rocky saying he's passing this on to that generation, New River Institutes, Sturgeon City, the Youth Council, bringing in all of our partners, that's what makes our community so amazing. So I tell you, for each of the individuals that participated and believed in the message more than our ability to deliver it, they're amazing. They did all this heavy lifting. I want to tell you, I want to start out and tell you that I wrote the script, I directed it, I, I did the application, but I did nothing except show up at the airport and say, hey, guys, we're supposed to get on this Southwest flight, I'll see you there. These guys carry a lot of work into, to each and everyone that's here and the ones that aren't here. They were amazing. We may have brought home this wonderful plaque that says All-America City 2025, and that one now says two times, as Mr. Warden pointed out, 1992, when Mr. Bittner brought it home first, and 2025, when this community said, we're still making magic happen in Jacksonville. And that's, that's the leadership you guys give us, that's this community that steps up each and every day, and that's the public comments that make us do more, think about the hard questions, and still make decisions moving forward. So thank you, thank you, team, thank you, 72,000 people that calls Jacksonville home. Thanks, Mayor, appreciate it.
Thank you. How many, how many cities were actually applied for this?
Application 50 or 60 this year, 20 finalists, three cities from the great state of North Carolina. Over one-third of the winners came from North Carolina, Kinston, Carrboro, Jacksonville.
What's left?
Nothing for the group after that.
All right, with that, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss some issues regarding attorney-client privilege.
So moved.
All in favor, signify five percent. Aye. All opposed?